Good evening and welcome to the April twenty-third meeting of the MCCSC Board of School Trustees. We ask that you please come to order. This is a time to celebrate the members of our school community, Dr. Staubbaum.
Thank you, President Hennessy, the Board of School Trustees and community members. It is my pleasure to share a few highlights of this month's Celebration of Success and our 2023-2024 Equity Spotlight Award winner. Celebration of Success is a feature of every regular Board of School Trustees meeting. It recognizes the achievement of MCCSC employees, students, and volunteers who make a difference in our school community. We would like to recognize Joel Brainard, Bachelor, Middle School Music Teacher. Throughout Joel's seventeen years with Bachelor, he has been asked to teach a variety of music classes. He has always stepped up and put his best foot forward as he took on new challenges. Joel continues to keep the overall goals of Bachelor and MCCSC in mind as he advances his music program. Joel goes above and beyond at Bachelor every year. Thank you, Joel. The Monroe County Community School Corporation created the Equity Spotlight Award to recognize students, faculty, staff, student organizations, schools, and community partners for fostering inclusive environments that reflect the MCCSC mission, vision, and core values. This month's Equity Spotlight Award winner goes to Grandview Elementary School Social Worker Bridget Cologne. She exemplifies remarkable leadership by fostering a sense of belonging for all. Her exceptional efforts create a welcoming environment where students feel valued and accepted. As a leader on our diversity, equity, and inclusion team, Ms. Cologne ensures every voice is heard. She recently shared insightful information from Learning for Justice, enriching our discussions with diverse perspectives. Bridget's collaborative spirit, empathy, and support extends to all staff and students. Thank you, Ms. Cologne, for your commitment and leadership in creating a safe and inclusive place for everyone. Thank you.
On behalf of the Board, thank you, Dr. Staubbaum, and congratulations to all those recognized tonight and for the work that you're doing in our community. We will now proceed to public comments. Thank you to everyone who completed a comment card and acknowledged the guidelines to speak to the Board tonight. As a reminder, Mrs. Butcher will ring the bell once to signal you have thirty seconds remaining for your comment and five bells to signal that your time has concluded. Please do remember that we cannot speak on personnel issues, but otherwise I will call the person who is up and then the person to follow so that you can prepare yourself. We're going to start with Chris Cook and move on to John Warner.
Board, got me? Great. Back again. This is month four in a row. Not saying anything new, but I wanted to speak in light of the proposal to consolidate the Ketchum districts with Templeton and Childs. Again, I would encourage you to vote no tonight as you vote on that. I understand that it moves the needle in SES six percent across our district. I don't think that needle moving six percent is enough to justify the disruption to all the kiddos. And I don't think it actually addresses the larger systemic issues across our district. I think those are far larger, and a lot of them are far outside y'all's purview to address as a school board. But we have huge issues. I don't deny that. I don't deny the challenges y'all face. I just do not think that the proposal put forward with Childs and Templeton and adding those catchment zones to one another is actually going to accomplish the goal that you stated, which is to balance SES. And I would love to hear you guys really look at other options to really go after that with gusto and really address the issues we all agree exist in our district. I don't think Childs and Templeton merger really moves the needle to the degree that it would really affect in a negative way a lot of kiddos with a lot of extra change that they'll need right now. Thank you.
Thank you. John Warner, and then next up will be Michael Burris.
My name is John Warner. I have one child in first grade at Childs and another in the preschool program. I wanted to clear up what I believe is a common misconception many Board members have over why Childs' parents are concerned about the proposed merger. We are not concerned about the merger because we don't believe the district should address SES imbalance. Quite the contrary, I think many of us understand the socioeconomic imbalance that exists in MCCSC schools. We welcome efforts to fix it. Nor is it because we don't want our children to attend Templeton. From everything that I've heard about Templeton, it is a great school with wonderful teachers, and the multi-age classrooms seems like a fantastic learning environment. If school districts were to be redrawn and we ended up in Templeton, we would be very happy. We do understand the good intentions behind the proposed merger, but you cannot expect us to put our faith in good intentions. No, to be frank, and this is nothing personal, we are concerned about the merger because we don't trust the Board and the administration to oversee the merger in a well-thought-out way that minimizes academic disruptions. You have given us very little evidence in this whole process as to why we should trust you to competently handle the vast logistical details inherent in the merger. That is why we are concerned. We think the merger could very well go poorly due to lack of oversight, and our children would be the ones negatively impacted. I still cannot believe that it is the best practice to start at the end and work our way backwards. I cannot imagine any other professional setting where that, where the end is determined first and the details worked out later. I know that the proposed resolution you are voting on tonight, you will be soliciting feedback and leave yourself open for other options, which I believe is a step in the right direction. But I can't help but think, in the end, the schools will merge no matter what, and no matter if all the details worked out before the merger is put into place. Certain Board members have mentioned how this merger can serve as a stepping stone to address larger socioeconomic imbalances within the district. But I ask you to consider what happens if the merger doesn't go smoothly, if you don't take time to fully consider every logistical detail. If the merger goes poorly, if the district continues to lose students, you have lost any chance of implementing wider change. So I urge you, no matter what you ultimately decide to do tonight, give yourself enough runway to change course if need be and don't ram anything through on the basis of good intentions. Once again, you are asking us as parents to put our trust in you, the Board, and administration to oversee the merger. But as hard as this may be to hear and to internalize, you have done very little in this process to earn our trust. This whole process has been poorly thought out and messaging so disjointed that it inspires little faith and ability to oversee the merger in a well-thought-out and competent way. We want us to trust you. You must earn it. And you can start earning it by going through the process the right way. Start at the beginning. Look at all options. Do detailed planning for each one and then decide which one is best. That is a sound process and one we can trust. Please consider that as an option. Starting at the end and looking backwards does not inspire faith or confidence. Please do this the right way and earn our trust. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Michael Burris and then Katie Burris.
Good evening. The first points I was going to make today were about the two most important things whenever you do any sort of project are the how and the why. And I think the two previous speakers kind of did that better than I would do here, but the how and why of this project has, I think, been very poorly communicated and doesn't make very much sense to me. Why are we doing this? Why is this merger being pushed through so heavily and quickly when this redistricting just seems like the much more obvious solution to try to make this balance without as much disruption as possible? And the how, I really don't think I can say it any better than the last speaker of how is this going to work and the faith in this working well, I think, is very low. Some comments that were made at previous meetings, there were comments about if we redistrict and don't merge, does he worry that parents will just transfer out of the school they get redistricted to, which they wouldn't be able to with the merge? And I think the bigger concern there is if you restrict the parents to be unable to transfer, they're just going to leave the school system. As previous speaker said, losing the people and making the school system weaker as a result. Another point that I have seen brought up is that some of the hesitancy to redistricting is the issues that the last redistricting caused. And I think that just to me means there's even more reason to do a redistricting. Do it the right way, learn from the mistakes of the previous redistricting, and try to make it better than we did before. Another comment I've heard is how if we don't do this, it means we're doing nothing. And that, I just disagree with that greatly. I think not doing this means you're taking the time, trying to do this the right way, do the right thing, make it work for the long term, not just a short-term needle moving. And overall, it just seems like the amount that is being gained by this is vastly overdone by everything that's going to be lost from this. Last point I want to make is just kind of going through the personal story. Obviously, everyone has different reasons for this, but I wanted to talk about a couple of things from our family. As my wife has brought up many times, we are a parent of a special needs childhood child. And I remember last fall when she started kindergarten, the relief we started to feel when she started there. It really felt like she was starting to get the attention she needed, and she is thriving there now. And the fear of trying to start that over by going to a new school very quickly, it was nice to feel like this is what our next seven years. We're here, we're where we need to be, and she's doing very well. Some of the other things that are going to be gone because she loves working with the older students, they come to her classroom and, well, and can't walk to school anymore. She won't be able to school with her brother. Don't like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Burris next, and then Nicole Freeman.
Good evening, Katie Burris. In case you've forgotten just how you forgot to even mention students with disabilities in the Childs-Templeton merger resolution, I am the parent of a special needs child who will be directly impacted. Actually, I'm only saying a few things. I'm honored that fellow special needs parents trusted me with their hearts tonight to share their concerns regarding this merger. Don't assume these sentiments are only from Childs' parents. Many quotes represent the Templeton community. Quote, "If they, the Board, went to lift up disadvantaged students, students with disabilities clearly fall into that category. I see the value in economically diverse classrooms, but ignoring this impact will have on students with disabilities is a gross oversight. Just sitting next to a wealthier kid isn't going to help with that." Special needs parents still do not know, quote, "What is the Board doing to support kids with disabilities and kids on IEPs through such a drastic transition that might happen all over again with redistricting?" It doesn't make sense to me, especially for special needs kids, to do a consolidation. I don't trust that they, the Board, can guarantee Templeton and Childs' kids won't get redistricted, end quote. The uncertainty of how you will support students with disabilities is obvious that a teacher recommended as special needs parent amend their child's IEP right now. Why? Because, quote, "practically in anticipation of the changes to come, knowing it's likely that special ed teachers are going to be stretched even thinner than they already are. I just haven't gotten any reassurance that our kids are being considered in this proposal," end quote. And I can agree, because nowhere in this resolution does it address kids with disabilities and special needs and how you will accommodate this population. We're just an afterthought, when in fact, they are the most vulnerable of the kids in those schools, and I think they're on the same level as kids that are low SES in terms of needs and vulnerability, end quote. One parent says, quote, "The consistency and continuity of care of a K through six structure is crucial for kids with IEPs," end quote. Yet, the Board doesn't acknowledge the data supporting benefits to fewer elementary school transitions and multi-age interactions, which is hypocrisy at its finest, considering the commitment to keeping the multi-age program at Templeton intact. Not sure it's equitable that these benefits can only be experienced by a select few students at one of the two schools. There's a plethora of information you promised to provide over the last few months and have not delivered. So I'm not optimistic the special needs community especially will receive guidance anytime soon. I think one of these fellow parents summed it up well when they said, quote, to me, "The Board has shown that they don't care about this population, and that's the only way that I can see it." Thank you.
Thank you. We have Nicole Freeman and then Eileen Wenzel.
Hello. My name's Nicole Freeman. I think by now we all know I'm against the merger. This is more about the process and how we got here. As I was reading the articles about the recent vote of no confidence at IU, parallels between that scenario and our current situation became strikingly apparent. One particular quote from a faculty member resonated deeply, saying, "They want to turn Indiana University into a top-down institution where they force their own vision." Despite overwhelming opposition voiced by the majority of constituents across not only Childs and Templeton communities, but the community at large, evident in social media discussions, public feedback, and I imagine your email inbox, this Board seems quite intent on imposing its will despite the bylaws stating that the Board is, quote, "elected or appointed to represent citizens," end quote, "declares its intent to act as a truly representative body for citizens in all matters related to programs and operations." Can you honestly say that you're doing that with this merger? That you're putting your own desires and biases and savior and superiority complexes aside? That you're truly acting as a representative body if you continuously disregard the wishes of those you serve? If you can answer yes to that question, then your only option is to vote against this merger resolution. If you can't, then your only option is to abstain. Unfortunately, I feel that this Board has tuned me and others with a similar perspective out for months. But before dismissing this comment because you just see me as some loud, white, wealthy child's parent, perhaps consider why voices like mine seem the loudest. Could it be that the scheduling of meetings, which this Board solely sets on weeknights, excludes lower socioeconomic families unable to attend due to lack of childcare and non-traditional work hours? Or perhaps it's because the minimal information that has been sent out has been disseminated only in English, alienating the vast number of ENL families within this community? Despite the bylaws stating that this Board has a, quote, obligation to determine and assess citizen desires, you've done nothing to reach out to any families alone those you say you're trying to help who are unable to attend these meetings for whatever reason. They accuse people like me of being elitist because we don't blindly support an illogical, poorly thought-out plan to merge just two of fourteen elementary schools in the name of district-wide equity, with the lower SES school in the pairing being fourth in terms of socioeconomic need in the district. Let me be very clear. I support diverse classrooms. I am pro-equity. I'm an advocate for helping those who need it, especially when it comes to children, because as a child, I was someone who needed it. Because of that, I've spent much of my adult life giving back. If a split-grade merger of Childs and Templeton was the solution to equity issues in this district, I believe most of us here would be about one hundred percent behind it. But it's not, and if you took your blinders off for just a moment, I believe you would see that. Throughout this entire process, the Board has collectively failed the students, the teachers, the faculty, the parents, and the rest of the MCCS stakeholders. Among other things, these conversations have been drenched in hypocrisy, gaslighting, misinformation, preconceived notions, and false promises. But there's a silver lining. We can have our own vote of no confidence in November at the polls.
Thank you very much. As a point of information, I do just want to say that the information has been disseminated in multiple languages as a result of being put out on Parents Square. That can be instantly translated into how many languages, Mrs. Harmon? How many languages do we translate? Over a hundred languages. So as a point of information, I just wanted to note that. Thank you. Eileen Wenzel?
My name is Eileen. I have three children who are directly affected by this merger. In the March meeting, three Board members were tasked with presenting recommendations and options on this topic. Where are they? If you were honest with yourself, with your constituents, you would acknowledge that you were always going to vote for this merger. It didn't matter what we told you, what we asked you to consider, the questions we raised, the hardships we cautioned would be a natural consequence of this merger, and sadly falling heavily on the families that you were trying to help. After listening to an overwhelming majority of constituents speak out against this merger, you have said in those meetings that you haven't heard from any low SES families, particularly in public comment, because the meetings likely overlap with times that they could not make it because of work and other family obligations. You said those times, and to date, you have not surveyed the affected families. You could survey the families. If you really wanted to do your due diligence and hear from those families, you could. It's clear you do not care to do the work necessary to hear from those families. You know what's best for them. At least, that's the impression this Board gives to the public, which is both an impression of its superiority and privilege. You say, "Trust us," but how can we trust you when you promised in the last two meetings that you had published research, that you have been reviewing this support to this merger? It's been nearly five months since this merger was originally proposed, and to date, you haven't shared any research. You have requested questions from the public, and you've promised an FAQ page. To date, there's been no FAQ page published. How can we trust you that you can merge two schools when you have promised to share research and haven't, when you have promised to publish a webpage and haven't? And moreover, you tell us the administration will provide the details, and you bought out the superintendent's contract, and you are now going to rely on an interim who may or may not stick around to see this merger to completion. What if the superintendent has other ideas and equitable solutions for our elementary schools? What if they do not want to merge these two schools? How will you accomplish all of this in six months when you cannot publish a single webpage in five months? Many Board members have misconceived and dated impressions of Childs. How have any of you visited Childs recently? Surely, you would want to visit the schools. You will be merging before you merge them. If you would visit, you'd find racial diversity. It's wonderful. Additionally, the number of languages spoken in our schools is astounding. Unfortunately, you'd be shocked by some of the conditions our teachers and students work in. Our library books are lovingly worn out, and many are falling apart. Our playground has been without a slide, replaced with a wooden board and an orange cone for nearly an entire school year. Surely, by now, you've seen the pictures of termite damage, leaking roofs, and foundational issues. You would also be bothered by the large class size in many of our classrooms. I'm disappointed that you've not done your due diligence. I'm disappointed that you have not fulfilled your promises you've made. I'm disappointed that you're rushing this. I'm disappointed that you cannot propose any other ideas. I'm disappointed that you're using your position of privilege to talk down to your constituents with an air of superiority instead of listening to them and working with them. You can do better. I hope you do so. If not, I hope we can find other members of this community to serve our school board in November.
Thank you. Last, we have, well, on this topic, we have Katie Edmonds.
The proposal to merge Childs and Templeton in order to achieve better balance of socioeconomic status was presented to the Board in December. Over the past four months, several major concerns about this process have emerged. These concerns include communication, logistics, and timelines. At the January meeting, the Board was asked to please prioritize equity-centered engagement with those who face scheduling, transportation, language, and cultural barriers that may prevent them from attending these evening meetings. The Board vote included a commitment to parent forms, teacher forms, and an online question portal. Has any progress been made toward equity-centered engagement with the community? Is there an online question portal? At the March meeting, we were told that we should trust the process with buses. We were told it always works out. Actually, for the past several years, the buses have consistently worked out badly. We still have half hour at elementary schools, starting at nine-thirty. A fairview parent says his kids get home faster by walking than their neighbors who take the bus. The Board seems to intend to solve every equity problem by promising more and more buses. We trust the buses to remain problematic, particularly if we have given up even trying to return to nine o'clock start times for all the elementary schools. Today's vote will attempt to set a clear timeline to allow teachers, administrators, and families to plan for a transition starting in August 2025. But it seems that today's vote will continue not to address many important details, such as whether the transition will happen all at once or proceed two grades at a time, as outlined in the December document. Today's resolution allows postponing the determination of grade span configurations until next December. We can't start planning until we know what grades will be at each school, starting in which year. When we look at how long it has taken this administration to hammer out the details for the early childhood learning initiatives, which are very important, we can see that it's not happening in time for families or teachers to prepare adequately for the upcoming school year. The Childs and Templeton merger will also be complex, and I think Childs and Templeton families can reasonably anticipate that many of the important logistical decisions will also be left to the last minute. Expanding pre-K and redistricting are important and should be done correctly, not rushed. We're being told to trust the process, but all the evidence we have tells us we should not.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jenny Noble Cuchara, and then Paul Rhodes, and then Paul Farmer.
Good evening, President Hennessy, Dr. Hauswald, and members of the MCCSC School Board of Trustees. My name is Jenny Noble Cuchara, and I am the president-elect of the Monroe County Education Association for the upcoming school year. In that role, I will represent the certified teachers of MCCSC. I'm speaking to you this evening to urge you to vote to pass the MCEA-MCCSC Discussion Bylaw. What this bylaw ensures is that teacher voices will be heard. We know that all teacher working conditions are student learning conditions. Voting affirmatively on this bylaw will mean that our students' teachers will be able to speak professionally and openly with their school administrators about pedagogy, scheduling, curriculum, mentoring new teachers, and myriad other concerns that affect student learning conditions. It also ensures that the discussion teams that we already have existing between MCEA and MCCSC can continue the important work of having conversations about the questions that face us. What technology will best serve students of different ages? What do IDOE mandates mean for our pacing of teachers and giving assessments? What resources and materials can be shared across the district to best support all learners? Our MCEA Board of Directors and the association representatives from every MCCSC building voted unanimously to support this bylaw as presented tonight and can't imagine being silenced by its absence. Teachers really want Teachers really want kids to be successful. With this bylaw as it stands, MCEA members will work in tandem with administrators to achieve short-term and annual goals to make that happen. Thank you for voting yes.
Thank you. Paul Rhodes, and then Paul Farmer.
Good evening, President Hennessy, Dr. Hosswald, and members of the MCCSC School Board of Trustees. My name is Paul Rhodes. I've been duly elected by the members of MCEA and appointed by the president to read the following statement concerning the bylaw and discussion with MCEA. To begin with the word of background on what the bylaw addresses. For more than fifty years, teachers' unions in Indiana have had the right under state law to discuss with their employers key issues relating to student learning, school safety, and teacher working conditions. This law ensured the principle that the collective voice of educators, as represented by their union, was at least given a hearing as part of the decision-making process. Last year, in an effort to weaken union voices, a supermajority in the Indiana legislature voted to remove this right. They replaced it instead with a meaningless stipulation that school employers may discuss any topic they choose with any group of school employees they choose to talk with. Then again, they may not. With the current bylaw proposed in tonight's agenda, the school board has an opportunity to reverse this action of the state and to reassert the principle that teacher voices matter as represented by their duly-elected union. This bylaw does not give special powers to the union. Nobody has a veto or a special right to dissent. But the bylaw will ensure continuation of the right we teachers have enjoyed in Indiana for a half-century to have our voices heard on issues that affect us and the children we are dedicated to teaching. Our MCEA Board of Directors and our building-level representatives across the district have unanimously voted to support the bylaw as written and proposed this evening. And we are thankful that the school board is considering this important step in reaffirming the principle of union representation and collective discussion. On the other hand, we know there have been proposals to amend the bylaw by changing the words "shall" and "must" to "may" and removing the requirement that certain topics must be subject to discussion before implementation of an action occurs. We do not agree to these amendments. Our view is that any such change of "shall" or "must" to "may", and any amendment that eliminates discussion before implementation will render the bylaw optional and therefore meaningless. Any such change would be worse than no action at all, as it would align the MCCSC board bylaws with the anti-union actions of the state legislature. Our MCEA representatives and board of directors have unanimously voted that if such amendments are passed, we recommend that the MCCSC board vote no on the amended bylaw. As members of the union, we believe that our voices are strength. We are thankful that the board is considering this measure to value teachers' voices and to restore the principle of collective discussion to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Farmer.
Thank you, President Hennessy, Dr. Hosswald, Board of Directors. Just a couple of things here, I wanted to talk again about the discussion, and thank you, Jenny and Paul, for those comments. I want to make it clear that the association is one thousand percent behind what is currently being proposed that you see. We know last month, there were several things of changing to "may", as Paul mentioned a moment ago, deleting the line and making decisions, that, you know, some confusion about that, and so on, that we think that was going to be proposed tonight. The answer is no. The association does not agree with those at all. One hundred thousand percent, no. We would rather have you do a vote up or down on what you currently see in front of you. We fully believe in that, because if the other one does go, not only what Paul just mentioned, but it's going to weaken what we currently have with administration. We firmly believe that. I do want to make a clarification, because actually, I just talked with our attorney again this morning, and I know one of the concerns that I know as board members, which you should, and I'm not speaking for attorneys, but I'm sure they do too, is you wouldn't be able to make important decisions right away, because if you made that change, we have to go to the discussion before we make the decisions. That's not true. Everything that's already happened this year, whether it's the high school schedule scenario, the SES schedule that might be happening tonight, that you vote on it, even if you agreed to what we currently have, okay, that's on there, and you say yes. And then you say, "Yes, you're going to approve the SES." "Oh, but we can't because we haven't had a discussion yet." Uh-uh. Even before Senate Bill 486 came into law, it's always been, for fifty years, discussion before implementation. You're not going to implement SES until the fall of twenty-five. We got a year and six months to have conversations. SES with the high school schedules. We had tons of conversations with those going around, and we would still have had more. It's about, it's discussion before implementation. It's not discussion before decision. There's a difference, there's a big difference between that. Because what it does is it takes, like, say, for example, as I think some of the parents mentioned here tonight, we're going to have an interim, we're going to have a new superintendent, maybe new ideas come around. Could whatever decision is made by SES tonight, could it potentially change before the fall of twenty twenty-five? The answer is, of course it could. Of course it could. Same thing with us, in our discussion and conversations that we have with you. We encourage you to vote as-is, given to you as yes. Otherwise, no.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Farmer. And thank you to all of you who signed up to speak tonight. I appreciate all of that input and engagement. I believe firmly in the process of sort of community engagement, whatever form it takes in this room. But moving on, we will now move to our consent agenda. And for our consideration, this includes the following: minutes from the regular board meeting held on March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, the financial report from March twenty twenty-four, appropriations balance report, register of claims, payroll register and payroll claims, request to declare a surplus and authorized disposal of out-of-date items. Do I have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So it's been moved by Ross and seconded by Ashley that we approve the consent agenda as presented? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please signify by saying aye.
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 All against? Any abstentions the motion carries? Next, for our consideration, are the donations. We've received over three thousand dollars in donations. Thank you to our donors, your generosity is greatly appreciated. Do I have a motion to accept the donations?
So moved.
Do I have a second? It's been moved by Ashley and seconded by Erin Cooperman? Seconded by Kathy, I couldn't hear, it was like, I'm so sorry. Okay. By Kathy, that we accept the donations as presented? All those in favor of the motion to approve the donation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Abstentions the motion carries. Okay, now for our consideration. Old Business Item Five dash dot oh-one is the third reading for Bylaw 135, which is to meet and confer for school employees exclusive representatives and discussion rights. Is there a motion to adopt Bylaw 135 as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Kathy and seconded by Ross that we adopt Bylaw 135 as... Brandon, my God, I'm sorry tonight, guys. Brandon, that we accept Bylaw 135 as presented? I had actually intended to present the following amendments to the document tonight, and then to actually table that conversation so that the union would have time to respond to us based on those amendments. But seeing that we've already heard from the union tonight, I think it's no longer necessary for us to make those following amendments. So I will instead open it up for discussion before we vote. So, discuss.
I am really, really excited at the opportunity to be able to carve out our district as one that will listen, ensure that teachers have a voice at the table, and teachers have a voice in this process, and that we will respect that process despite what the state legislature has done to undercut us and undercut that process. And so, I think it is, you know, nothing more than what our teacher representatives have already said, except that it would be really exciting, and I'm hopeful that we will be a trendsetter in Indiana of school districts that are going to center our teachers' voice and reaffirm that.
I guess I'll say something, since I was originally going to propose those amendments. It's interesting because, you know, as a former teacher and member of the MCEA, it's a strange position to be in to sort of have to sit in the seat between what our legal counsel is telling us and, you know, what the union has put in front of us. And I said to my wife, you know, as I've been mulling this over, like, I actually don't, I kind of don't know what to do, I'm in this position of, do I sort of prioritize the seat that I'm in and the board and the sort of protection of the district in a particular kind of way? Do I prioritize the MCEA and this policy? And it's been a really interesting moment, like, in some ways, like, one of the more difficult decisions I've had to make because of that conflict inside myself. And I think, you know, we've seen that there are these moments when rules are sort of meant to be broken because they don't serve people in a variety of ways, right? But I also think that there's a moment when rules or laws or policies get broken as a result of sort of faulty practice that, and those things do harm, right? And I do think that SB 486 is one of those moments. I think that it has done harm to our union and to the strength of union voice. And I think that for myself, you know, I understand the objections of our legal counsel to this because it limits the board's broad authority, and it puts us potentially at risk in particular situations. And I also think that, you know, putting this bylaw on the books, it does sort of bring us back to a point that we were at before that law was struck down. And so, in my mind, I think that we are knitting this back up and putting something back in its rightful place, and in that way, sort of mitigating or ameliorating the harm that has been done. And I think that if this district is working as it should, I think if any district is working as it should, and that the people are, all of us are sort of in our respective roles with care and intention and trust toward one another, then we should never be in the position where we might have to make certain kinds of decisions that would supersede those particular procedures. So I think as an extension of my trust in our teachers and in support of the MCEA and the value of their voices to me, I will be voting yes on this tonight.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a few things. Thank you, Kathy, for bringing this up, about two months ago?
Yes, February.
January.
January.
And I appreciate the voices tonight, but also appreciate the voices that were very clear, not only tonight, but last month as well, about these changes. So I'm glad we're hearing you all in your, in the conversation that's not just tonight, but it's been happening. So I'm glad that these amendments didn't come to the table, and I'm glad that we are planning on voting on the original one. I think we all sort of, seven oh voted to even put it on, so I'm glad that we can move on and get this started.
Any other last comments?
I just have a couple of questions. So it sounds to me like, I was confused by the comments that Paul made. It sounds to me like his position now is that the high schools get, even though he stood up while we were having the high school schedules debate and said that voting to make that change would open us up to liability, that he's now saying that wouldn't have opened us up to liability.
He is saying that that would not, he's saying that it is not about... So if we were to vote and implement something immediately the next day, that would be unfair labor practice, right? At this point, that's, the fact of the matter is, it's actually before implementation. So technically, if you were to vote, but your implementation date isn't until twenty twenty-five, there's still time for discussion before implementation. Now, I would say probably best practice would be to have discussion before you put anything on the table like that. But I think that is what he said.
And Paul, if I remember, Paul corrected that through an email.
Can I just say?
He did, but his correction was that he misunderstood that the law had been changed. And, you know, I just want to make sure that I understood what he was saying correctly. I think, yeah, that's...
Yeah, I was thinking, the default for so many years was if we circumvented that process as a board, we could be sued because there was a law on the books that said that that was their fair labor practice. But what happened last time had just changed in the, you know, that law is not going to be anything... We can't get sued for unfair labor practice, there's no law.
No, but I think he actually, I think he actually said, even prior to SB forty-six, it was, "You have to discuss before implementation, not discuss before a vote or a decision." So he's saying even before SB 486 happened, that would have been true, that it is before implementation, discussion before implementation.
Okay, and I mean, I appreciate that. I also, you know, I think that the advice we got from our attorneys was a little different than that, and I don't, I know that Paul can't give legal advice, so, you know. So I appreciate that information. It does, it is something I'm taking into consideration, but not taking as legal advice, thank you. And then the other thing is that, you know, the, one of my concerns that I stated last month is, it's not just this policy, but the coincidence of this policy with our own Board Policy 3112 that prohibits teachers from speaking directly to the board. And that's our policy, we put that in place, not the state. So I just, I hadn't planned on asking this, so forgive me, I know it may, you may not be prepared to answer this. But I wonder if others on the board would consider amending that policy to allow teachers a more direct line to speak with the board. That would probably change my opinion on this policy.
My understanding over, oh, sorry, did you want to say something?
I was just going to ask a clarifying question.
Okay.
So when you say to amend the policy, do you mean that you would want to amend the policy to make it clear that it is the entity that the union and its representatives can speak to us, or is it broader than that?
Well, as I, so again, I'm, this is just, this is just me sort of putting out feelers to see how people feel about this. If I understand correctly, Policy 3112 says that all communication, any school employee that wants to communicate with the board must go through the superintendent. That's a paraphrase. But that's my understanding of Policy 3112. Tom's nodding, so I'm going to take that as some confirmation that I might be on the right track. And so, so I think that we, as a board, have the ability to change that policy. This is, again, as I said last month, one of my concerns is that the overlap between Policy 3112 and this bylaw creates a carve-out for, we created a policy that prohibits teachers from speaking to us, and then bylaw, the bylaw creates a carve-out for one representative or possible multiple representatives from the union to speak directly to us. And I feel like my, one of my concerns is that that gives too much power to a small number of people. If we were to change our own policy, 3112, to allow more direct communication with the board, then that wouldn't be putting so much power in the hands of a small number of people. It would give more teachers the opportunity to speak to us instead of a small handful.
So I think, and I'm just thinking about history of this particular policy, and I could be wrong, but I do think that, and we can certainly talk about this, I think that there's certainly room to discuss. And maybe we have this, I don't know if we want to put this on for an official discussion at some point on an agenda in the coming months, like, you can tell me if you want to do that. But I do think that there is a sense that when you allow full access, part of it does potentially weaken the voice of the union. And so, there, I think there might be some concern there that we need to tease out or to sort of talk through. But I'm certainly open to having that discussion to figure out what all of those pieces might be and what maybe we could do. Because I do, I mean, there is this sort of sense that we don't want to hear from teachers, and I think that that is actually really not true. Like, we would love to hear from teachers, but we are barred from hearing from teachers because of our policies. Part of it is that we have the voice of the union, right, and so that is one... Part of it is that we have the voice of the union, right? And so that is one, that's the, that's the unit of discussion. Um, so I don't know. I think that this is a complex one. I think that we probably need to carve out time to, to discuss.
Yeah, well, I, I appreciate that. And so I think, you know, in, in, in the absence of broad support to change our policy, I don't think that my position has changed. But a lot of people have spoken to the interest in hearing from teachers and, and I just wanna to ask, say that I also wanna hear from teachers and I think that we have the ability within our district to change policies to allow to the voices of more teachers to reach us.
I, I wouldn't feel comfortable with that myself. I, I know that's not what we're talking about now, but um, but just say, you know, for the future, that's not something that I'd be interested in going down that.
Yeah. I think that it comes across when you read it on its face level as like some kind of dictatorship where you don't get to talk to teachers and teachers are afraid to talk to you. But then as you, as you learn more about the role and about how things work, the process of them having a democratic process to bring teachers to us who we make the policy that greatly affects their working conditions, their, the kids' learning conditions. You know, if we got rid of it and I said I get to pick which ten teachers I wanna listen to about the working conditions and their learning conditions becomes problematic, or who we hear from, from my five closest friends and so forth. So I think that trying to, the way that this, it's a massive system, it's clunky. But the way that this is set up is to preserve the teacher's voice through their representative because on those big issues, if we start to hear back in the background and we start to get up and we, we think that this is a reality, but there's a major, there's a whole bunch of people over there, they have a process to bring that to us and it becomes um, it can become very, and then it can, it can leave out the superintendent whose job it is to run and the administration to run the district. So that is, you know, it looks, I think, when I first was on the board, it looks, take, takes you aback. But I understand it to be this preserving of the teacher voice with their democratic process. So that in our process of decision-making, we're not usurping that. And, and I've told my friends, of course I'm gonna talk to you and, and we have friends before we got on the board that are our teachers. But when I have had people who've come to me over in the past and been like, oh, this is going on, I now understand that I have to direct them to go to their union person, to go to their principal, to talk to those channels of communication. Because if I start going back to the superintendent and saying this is the latest buzz, it becomes quite chaotic and it leaves, it leaves, it, it becomes a non-process and it leaves out people who are in charge of it and it's not me. So that, that's my interpretation over these years. And, but we could have this as a discussion. We could hear from the union about why they do or don't support it, or if there's a way to phrase it, like, it could be something down, down the way, but right now I would just say I would not be comfortable with getting rid of it.
Yeah, and I don't think we can, we're not getting rid of it tonight. But I do think it's something that we could potentially discuss and hear from the union on. And I also think, you know, it's true that there are probably people who are not part of the union who don't feel like they have a voice and I, I think that's another issue in and of itself, that as a district, we can probably decide what, you know, with our superintendent and with that sort of it, how do we better hear from people that we can't hear from, whether it's because, whatever reason, I don't know. But I think it's something we should discuss at some point.
And we'll get it in board training if we go forward with more board training stuff about that too.
For sure. Any other comments on um the motion to adopt bylaw one thirty-five? Okay, um, in absence of any other discussion, I would like for us to then take a vote. Um, so all those in favor of the motion to adopt bylaw one thirty-five as presented, meet and confer for school employees exclusive representations and discussion rights presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? No. Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. That is um five, six, I can't ever count up here, I don't know. Six ayes in favor and one no. Okay, we're just like hopping from one big thing to the next people, so hang on to your seats, I guess. Um, at the March twenty-sixth meeting of the Board of School Trustees, Board members Schur, Grimes, and Pirani agreed to review any requests for proposals received regarding attendance zone reconfiguration and to provide the board information regarding any RFPs. Um, is there a spokesperson for the group who would like to bring this information to the board?
I will.
Thank you. Um, so it has been motioned, I guess, actually Ross is at a motion?
I think so. I think it's just a discussion.
Just a discussion. Okay, um, all right. Can you go ahead and present that?
Sure, absolutely. So as President Hennessy stated, um, at the March board meeting, we did put out a request for proposal regarding uh redistricting. Those proposals were published uh March twenty-fifth and April second. One of the things that has been brought up is that there's a whole lot of people in Bloomington who could potentially at the university help us with this. Ironically, we got no responses from them to the request. We had one reply. Um, company out of Missouri, I believe it is. Um, and I have been chasing that down since. Um, I've spoken with them directly. Board member Schur has spoken with one of their references, which was rather glowing. Um, here's what he has told me. This is something that we could potentially have proposals for what catchment zones would look like uh sometime late summer. July, August, um, is kind of an aggressive timeline, but he believes he can make that work. Um, then he asked what our goals would be with that process. And obviously what we're talking about is balancing SES within our, our elementary schools, which currently have the exact numbers, if I speak correctly. Um, a low end of fifteen percent and a high end of seventy-eight. That's a spread of what, sixty-three percentage points um reflected in our current enrollment. So yes, you know, what do we want that accepted spread to be? Does, do we want it to be five percent? Do we want it to be twenty percent? Um, and then within those, what are our transportation limitations? What are acceptable bus times for children? What do those catchment zones look like? What are our individual building capacities? All of those are things that have to be taken into consideration in this process. Um, again, he brought up transfer policy. Do you have open transfers between schools? Cause if you do, the, the goals can immediately be wiped out because the way the schools are filled can change. Um, the other thing that I brought up to him was that we need to look at population density shifts that have happened in Bloomington since our last redistricting, and they've been drastic. Um, so those are all things that he brought up. You know, it's been commented here in the last few meetings and I've kind of roughly jotted down maybe twenty-five times, twenty-five individuals have brought up that there's a groundswell of support for redistricting. I really would hope that that's the case. But we have such a small percentage of the district population represented, I don't know. But I think we need to see what it looks like and see what those possibilities would be. Um, somebody mentioned earlier, and I, I forget exactly who it was, about um the pain points, I believe. I, I don't remember the exact word they used. But this would have a whole lot more dramatic change. And this would affect probably, you know, I don't know, forty, fifty percent of the kids would switch schools in the district? I don't know. I don't know what that number would look like. Cause I'm not a demographer and that's why there's experts who do it. Um, but it would be much more drastic. Would the ultimate goal be better? Probably. But it could be very disruptive overall. And that's, that's what I found out to this point um on redistricting. The proposal, the guy can do it. He's got his group that could do it and make it work for us. Um, they've done work with another district um that had about ten thousand students. He said it wasn't near the geographic um print that we are, wasn't nearly as large geographically. Um, and another group that was about ten thousand students um in another district that was similar. They had a four hundred square mile district with limited buses. So they've done work similar to what we do. That's what I know at this point. Anybody feel free to ask any questions from the board.
You may have said this already, Ross, but what was their timeline for submitting um proposal or uh? I think they, I think their bid said they would be able to get us uh maybe like three plans to choose from.
Late summer.
Late summer.
July, August, maybe September, just depending on how in-depth they have to go. The one thing that um was a potential variable is if we want them to also do um potential enrollment projections towards the future, rather than basing it on just current um residency levels.
And I, and I'm guessing too that, that timeline depends on how long we take to.
Oh, absolutely.
To uh, to move forward with this.
He said he could get started in two weeks if we wanted him to.
Um, I would just like the, um, I mean, he could get started with the the looking at it and the, you know, studying it or whatever, but I certainly would like the new administration to be working closely with this company and, and, and putting their input in it too.
Absolutely. But they have to get, you know, they just have to get all the
All the stuff.
The structural data, if you will, to begin their process and, you know, what our ca- current catchment zones are. You know, what the enrollment capacities of the buildings are. A lot, a pretty detailed conversation with transportation, obviously, to know what, what those logistics look like and that kind of thing.
I- is there then a sort of contract on the table that you're recommending for approval at this time?
We don't have a contract from them yet. We have his, his initial proposal, but we do not have a contract.
So is it a bid? Is that what?
Yes, yep. And I don't know what we would need to do as far as that, John. Mr. Kenny?
I spoke a little bit in administration, uh, with it being a services contract. Uh, certainly transparency, you wanna get bids, quotes, but you don't have to go with a low bidder. You can go with um factors in the proposal that most meet the needs of what you're trying to accomplish.
What do we do if it's the only one that we got?
It's my understanding that that's fine if you wanna accept it. It's usually just that more variety gives you more choice, but if the one is acceptable, I believe you can accept it.
Tom, would you, you might ask Tom, Tom, would you advise on how they could move forward? If they can start in two weeks, what would the process be? Um, what limits?
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Do, do we need to be as a board to approve that contract then, or can?
And do we need to make a motion to move forward, or can we just move forward as we have been until we have an official contract?
One last thing I would point out, based on the, the board's apparent urgency on this, if they were to get a contract in two weeks and you would review it, um, even though the main meeting is earlier, this is a pretty small contract, so technically the board um, I believe could authorize, um, Mr. Kenny even, if you, if you approve it, Mr. Kenny could also move forward. If, I mean, if it's close to a board meeting, it doesn't matter, but if for some reason you would delay it three weeks, that might be something you could consult with John Kenny, because I know this is a pretty, this is way below the threshold for board approval. So if you approve it and the board seems to wanna go in that direction and the subcommittee is in favor of it, it's something you could work with John so that you don't lose a month or three weeks.
Okay, great.
I think.
I know, I know, I know you said that you called one of the references. Do the three of you have a sense of whether this, this is, you think we should go with this company or not?
Yeah, so I talked to um a reference uh earlier today and they actually um use them, like, they have them on the payroll essentially. They give, every year they give them a demographic report. And then if it requires them to move and switch things around, every couple of years they do that. Um, and this reference said that every, he, he kinda jokingly said this guy should like hang out at casinos the way that he seems to be able to predict things. Um, so uh, so he's chosen the good work of uh redistricting. Um, but essentially he said that everything that he's sort of projected, his company's projected, has come very close to what has happened as far as the growth and the numbers and when they switch people around. Uh, one instance he gave, this gentleman was in a district um back when Katrina happened and they were, they're more inland and
They're in Mississippi.
In Mississippi. And so they saw an influx of almost double the amount of enrollment come into their town overnight. And they had this company sort of uh rework and kind of figure out how to balance out the schools like in a very quick timeline. And so he says that the community, they have community trust cause they rely on, they rely on data very heavily and uh, and are okay with that being pushed out to the community. And they say that the community supports them and, and really they're part of sort of the team in some ways uh throughout the year. So he, he couldn't say many good things, or too many good things about them. He said lots of good things about them.
Couldn't say enough?
Good things about them?
Yeah, lots of good things.
That's good. That's good to hear. Any other questions or comments about this? Okay, um, great. Then I think we'll continue to proceed with moving that forward and um.
I'll contact him tomorrow and have him generate a contract and get it to us.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And we will move on to the second part of this conversation, which is the resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh seven, consolidating child in Templeton Elementary Schools. Um, do I have a motion to adopt and approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh seven, consolidating child in Tem- Templeton Elementary Schools as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Brandon and seconded by Ashley that we adopt and approve the resolution um twenty twenty-four dash oh seven as presented. Um, at the March meeting, we asked for a presentation before considering the child's Templeton merger. A list of questions was provided to Dr. Oswald with a request for a presentation at tonight's meeting. With that, I will yield the floor to Dr. Oswald. Um, and you can take it away, sir.
Uh, good evening, board. Uh, thank you um for um the questions, the, just uh some context. Of course, the board has been leading this process and uh they emailed uh to um administrative team a list of questions they would like to have read and answered at the meeting. Special thank you to the cabinet who worked and provided these answers and originally the people that, that really had the most specific insight on each of these questions. I was gonna have them step up, but um it was gonna be a back and forth. So um, I understand that we are, the purpose tonight is not for in-depth um, um discussion or follow-up on these, so I'm just gonna uh read the answers as the board requested. So question one. And I forgot I've got this. Question one. And we will put this on our website, uh, on this board agenda item as soon as the meeting's over. So how will families with multiple children at the two different schools handle drop-off and pickup? More information will be available in the fall of two thousand twenty-four when plans are finalized on grade span configurations, as well as the locations of any special programs. While greater efficiencies may be found, one example would be to perhaps follow the university Fairview model uh without a split currently between schools and have one of the schools start at a middle tier nine fifteen. Time structure already exists in our system. Um, parents would not have to drop off students at the same time. They would elect to drop off and pick up at one school and then do so at the do the same with the other school. The non-synchronous start time, for example, would make this feasible. All families would have the opportunity to utilize the transportation provided. Question two. Can we account for families who might have transportation barriers or time issues and provide a school-to-school shuttle? That way, parents um can have one drop-off or pickup, or perhaps there is another method. Parents that have transportation barriers or time issues would be able to utilize MCCSE transportation for one or more of their children for either beginning or end-of-day routing. MCCSE also provides extended day opportunities for two hours at all elementary schools. Uh, school-to-school shuttles will likely exist as well, based on the likelihood of all buses dropping students off at one school and then driving directly to the second school. Question three. As the board consulted with teachers affected by the merger, board question, consultation has been made with teachers through official MCA union discussions, as well as specifically held meetings with teachers from both of the impacted schools. Three board members observed both of the merger meetings held. Of note, a board policy uh specifically prohibits the board from directly consulting with teachers. That was the policy that was being discussed earlier that was brought up by, by board member Cooperman. There's also a parallel in the class that's happened, by the way. Question four. How will Title I funding be affected if Templeton's free and reduced numbers change? MCCSE's Title I funding will not be affected because Title I funding is provided based on district-level poverty. However, the However, the amount dispersed to individual schools varies on an annual basis based on individual school free reduced lunch counts. However, any reduction in funding to a school based on free reduced lunch count reductions would be delayed by one additional year. This is sort of a whole harmless. Regardless of the proposed merger, Templeton would likely eventually receive less Title I funding after the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Most likely, a child would receive Title I funding as a targeted school if the merger occurs. Childs Elementary currently receives no Title I funding. Question five. What will happen to the multi-age program? The multi-age program will continue as we have stated previously. The ultimate design of the multi-age program will be finalized during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year based on required teacher discussion as well as the community input. And as the resolution states with the new uh with the new uh team starting on July first. Question six. What will happen to the child IB program? The IB program will remain. I think uh some people don't realize that Templeton Elementary is also an IB PYP. That stands for Primary Years Program School. Uh recently, teachers from both schools received additional IB PYP training. These schools have both been IB schools for a long time and they have different certifications. Switching to grade spans uh would not affect their uh their authorization. What is the overall goal of the merger? Really a board question, but the board stated through its resolution that the goal is to create greater SES balance between elementary schools. What positive outcomes might we expect to see as a result of integrating these two schools? That is, what metrics of success would you recommend? MCCSE would have few fewer students in each classroom needing concentrated support based on SES. Uh in other words, the density of poverty will be dispersed ultimately. Um that's the first part of that question. In the old complexity index formula, when you have high, high concentrations of poverty, the 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 relationship between poverty and funding cost is not linear, it's exponential. Ultimately, metrics of success could include I read devils and I learned at. Question nine. Can we provide a list of additional outcomes that we seek to remedy? For for instance, many people are hyper-focused on academic success. It's important. I tend to lean toward all the other holistic outcomes that we will see. But I think this needs to be clarified and presented to the community in a concrete way. Um and the cabinet, administrative team worked with and provided this answer, which I agree with. While academic growth for all students through more equitable access is the primary goal in benefit of the merger, students will also benefit from more more social opportunities for peer-to-peer interactions with a more diverse group of students. Additionally, more resources and support will be available to all students as there will be larger grade levels and an expanded pool of students, parents, resources for various clubs, programs, and activities. Just a few examples. I have a feeling many more of these benefits can be outlined through the community conversations, the teacher conversations uh as during the fall semester, a a a specific plan is is designed for implementation. Next question number ten. How could consolidation in these two schools benefit MCCSE at large? Could it be studied and repeated if successful like a pilot? Uh based upon the successful consolidation of these two schools and a board's desire to continue to create greater SES balance, the merger will provide a great opportunity for research and could be repeated elsewhere in the district. Question eleven. What does the literature or case studies show about the number of years a student should stay in one building? Generally, there is no consensus regarding a perfect grade span configuration where the number of years a student stays in one building. However, having students at any one school for at least three years uh allows more time for relationships to be made. Question twelve. What sorts of events leading up to the first day will the school corporation make to help with the transition process? These decisions can be made at the beginning of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year based on teacher and community feedback. Examples uh could include the trust-based relational intervention paraprofessional development uh preview days such as when MCCSE moved the ALPS program and other similar examples. Again, many more possibilities exist and these decisions are best to be made after additional input is received. Question thirteen. What impacts to our students with disabilities do you foresee and how will the administration um work to minimize or remove these potential barriers? This was uh, I I I know this came up earlier and again, it's it's an individual answer, but I know that the special education department and the teachers are committed uh to to making sure each individual student's needs are met. Uh most impacts to students with disabilities are seen as positive, including an opportunity to learn and socialize with a more diverse group of students. However, any negative impacts such as adding one additional transition will be addressed through case conferences and individual student learning plans to ensure optimal learning environments and supports. Uh the approach currently exists at Rogers Benford Elementary School, for example. Question fourteen. How can we increase the number of paraprofessionals in these schools so that they can move with their cohort of students with disabilities to help ease the anxiety that can come with this change? And uh paraprofessional, and we're going to use a bunch of terms here. We'll put this on if you have additional questions you can ask at another time, but paraprofessional support staff are assigned to schools based on size. These positions are called preventionists or remediation assistants. Additional paraprofessionals are assigned to schools based on poverty. As the greater the percent of poverty and the greater density of poverty, the greater the need for additional support staff. Special education paraprofessionals are assigned through the special education department based on individual student needs. Finally, large classroom sizes can sometimes warrant the addition of paraprofessionals. So in essence, there's a whole lot of different paraprofessionals and support classified staff, support workers provided to our elementary schools and all of our schools for different reasons. So um they may be therefore serve one one individual student, many students um that have learning exceptions or um sometimes it's it's based on poverty. So there are a lot of stu- uh staff members assigned to schools for different reasons. All special education assignments are created based on individual student need and considerations can be made for the amount of staffing needed to assist students with disabilities when they transition. And I believe that was the last question provided. So thank you for the opportunity to uh read those questions and answers to you. I know I provided those to the board uh at an earlier time. Thank you.
Um thank you, Dr. Oswald, and members of the cabinet for your input on these questions. Um and now I think we will move into our discussion portion of this to talk about any questions, issues, or anything that you really have to say about this resolution at this point.
Uh just real quick, I think Brandon and I were tasked with collecting those questions and if I'm right about the number, I think the presentation, we asked for a presentation on about half of them, but the but we're going to put all the questions and responses up on our website. I think that's mostly a question for you, April. Is that right?
I I don't know. So those are board-specific questions. I do, I do think that those were board-specific questions. I don't know that those questions are going to go up, but I do think that there have been questions that have been collected that are largely about process and that are largely about um sort of the the plan and things like that, things that will be answered as this process moves, if it moves, if this resolution is officially adopted tonight. Um and that would happen as part of the process with the incoming superintendent and all of the pieces with the administration as they begin that work, right? So um if we think about like as we move through the referendum process for pre-K, we ended up with an FAQ page and so as the process was moving, the questions came in, the cabinet was sort of answering those questions and posting them to the website and they were adding to that as they went. So I think that is kind of like what will happen. Um I do think that this thing that was just presented will be posted tonight and can be included, but I think that broader FAQ was really as part of the process of implementation. That's when that would sort of be created.
Okay, yeah, thanks, that's fair.
Okay. Discussion?
I I feel like I've said all the things um over the past few months, so I don't know if I have anything to add that I haven't said already. I do appreciate the answer to the questions cabinet and from superintendent.
Yeah, as as do I. Um at this point, and I think my decision tonight is going to be to abstain from this vote. And here's why. Um for me, it's not the preferred option. I still want to see what redistricting looks like. Although I'm not a hundred percent opposed to it. We have an interim superintendent coming in in July. We need a deep facilities review of the two buildings before we could implement anything. The timeframe scares me. Now there's start time issues, there's what's transportation going to look like. Um and with a new administration coming in, I think that's a legitimate concern. The last section of this ties our hands at December thirty-first. And I just don't think that that really gives us the time we need to evaluate all the the parameters, especially with a new administration coming in. So while I'm not opposed to the idea completely, at this point, I'm willing to abstain on the vote because it's not that I don't like it, it's just that I don't feel it's right at this time.
Thank you, Ross. I really appreciate um, I really appreciate that and I appreciate the fact that you um sort of explicated that for the public so that they could understand why you're going to vote the way that you are. Anyone else? Discussion?
I, so um you know, we received uh we received one email sort of multiple times over the past um week. And I think a lot of the comments that were made tonight reiterated some of the things that were in that email. And um part of it said that that they support, they would support this plan. Uh after, I quoted it, "A transparent participatory process that engages local and external expertise." And I just wanted to say that that I agree with that. Um I would add to that list that not only local and external expertise, but also the expertise within our corporation. Um and I see this, I see this proposal, this resolution as a request to start that very process that that has been asked for. I think that it is the start to a transparent participatory process that engages experts. The the email and comments also said that a positive outcome of this needs to include an implementation plan. Again, I don't see that as contradictory to the proposal that's before us tonight. I think that what we're asking for is to begin the process of creating an implementation plan. I I like April Ross, I appreciate your comments and um the only part that I might push back on a little is that I don't see this as tying our hands. I see this as the beginning of asking um our administration to to work with us on this process.
And and I understand that is just that last line says that the cutoff time to make that decision is December thirty-first and it seems to be kind of a drop-dead date.
I wonder, I wonder too though, I mean, it it al- it also says, oh, let me just look at this really quickly. Okay, I don't know where my stuff, oh, it's on the back, good job. Uh you know, for the result that the board reiterates that within its broad authority and specifically emphasizes as part of this resolution its power to amend, approve, or change the outcome of this resolution. Should the redistricting study or additional community input result in a better SES balancing plan that provides greater results? I also think, I mean, I do wonder too, right, if we were to have, and our interim came in and said, we've begun this work, we're looking at all of the pieces, we've embarked on, you know, doing a facility study to to determine which school might be best suited for X, Y, or Z, or what repairs these schools might need. And we think that we're moving toward the goal, but we need an extra year. I mean, I think that we've started, they would have started that work in their, in that process and could still say at that point, we need more time. I I think that this leaves space for that individual to ask for that and for that to be sort of granted, but can I ask for the interpretation of the rest of the board?
That is how I interpreted it as well, that it gives us a lot of uh grace and gives the interim superintendent some autonomy on, and the and the administration some autonomy on how to move forward because as Erin said, I I see this as a start to the process as well. And I think we also have a lot of questions, but that's up to our administration to um tackle and and present to us as they find what they find.
But again, it it wouldn't be the case if they discovered that in January.
It's true, but I think with redistricting board maps, and I would say their resolution is never binding too, like we can always revise whatever we set, right? Um so, so I think that there's room for revision regardless. I also think that it ah, I don't know if I'm going to say that, but but I do think that um that there's a lot of room here for potential shifts and changes.
And and by the way, I add, time and time again, when we had our meetings with teachers, we heard them say, make a decision, so we have anxiety and so we know. And so I think part of this also kind of speaks to that. It says, you know, listen, we, you know, we, they have been, um you know, this conversation's been going on for a long time. And so I think that part of this just kind of says, listen, watch as you go through your redistricting, watch as you get input. And you know, if if for some reason a better plan is is understood in October, November, it may not be finalized, but you know, you'll you'll have an idea if this is realistic. But but you also, you know, I think we should acknowledge that we have heard our teachers over and over say, we want to know if this is going to happen and if there is a backstop, what's that timeline? I think that is an attempt also so people can say, listen, just kind of watch the redistricting and you know, it 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 may be, um I don't know, either or, uh board member Cooperman says that sometimes, but the reality is, I think that's just to give some assurance that that you know, this is uh this is Plan A. And and you're exactly right, it's a resolution. It can be changed in December, you can alter the date. There's a lot of things that you can do. I mean, as it says, the board has broad authority. It's just simply trying to give some timelines. And maybe they are estimates, but it basically says that if the community comes up with a better solution, you have it.
Yeah, and I think that that's really important because uh there's a couple of things here, right? And so in essence, I think part of the reason why it looks like this is a kind of baton handoff. This is our, this is our baton handoff to the administration. So typically what happens is this would be flip-flopped, right? This would not have started as a as a sort of board uh as a board initiative. Typically, a decision like this, we have a strategic plan, right? The the district is working that strategic plan and that thing would come to us, like they would say, hey, we know that you want to balance SES, here's one way that we see this could happen, we're starting to do this work, X, Y, or Z, blah, blah, blah. The administration would then be working towards that plan, getting community input, whatever. We took this on as a board issue, as a board initiative, right? And so when that happened, it does mean that it is a little bit flipped upside down because we cannot do the planning and implementation work, right? So the reason why this process looks the way it does is in part because we, the board, which are primarily a policymaking um sort of entity, right, have taken on something that is a non-policymaking thing. And so I want us to kind of think about this as a baton handoff to our administration to say, this is something that we are deeply invested in. You have said, here's a potential strategy. We have also put redistricting on the table in this mix and now we are working to procure, right, our consultant to do this work. We have our teams that are ready to pick up the baton and they can actually do this in a way that is engaging and participatory in a way that the board can't. As you saw in our listening sessions, when the board meets, we must meet in a particular way, which means we cannot engage with the public in a kind of participatory way that we would like to see happen, right? The way that you have dialogue and community conversations, that can happen when it gets handed off to the administration. The administration can begin those conversations in a new and sort of different way along the road to implementation. So yes, I want to say that. And the one last thing that I want to say and then I'll hand the mic to someone else. You know, I think there are a lot of questions about why the merger and why not just redistricting. And I have a couple of answers to that. Because I, and I know, you know, people have said, you knew you were going to make this decision from the start. That is actually quite untrue. I have been undecided from the start and for many reasons. Because on the one hand, I see the benefit of keeping the sort of K through five or K through six structure, um enabling families to sort of stay together, whether it be at one school or another. Um I can imagine the burden of multiple drop-offs. And you know, I don't want to cause any more sort of labor, undue harm, um just sort of stress in a day. I know what it takes to get out the door. And so there's, there's this thing, right? And we have that sort of on the table. But the other thing for me is that redistricting in this district is complicated. And I don't say complicated as in it's harder or there's more paperwork, which is how it's been portrayed on social media. This is not about us having to do more or less paperwork. It's not about a longer or more difficult process. There is not a single person in this room, on this administration, on this board, who is afraid of hard work because if we were, we would not be here. It is about the difficulty of the way that this town is configured. And so one of the issues, as we look at, for instance, the O'Neill report, that Capstone report that everybody pointed to. And so one of the issues, as we look at, for instance, the O'Neill report, that Capstone report that everybody pointed to over and over and has for years because it's a valuable piece of research. What it demonstrates is that it is difficult to create contiguous boundaries in this city and still get integration. So the challenge of redistricting is that we may end up with a very, very messy Swiss cheese model kind of thing, which requires longer bus rides for all students, kids being bussed all across town to all of these different schools. It is complicated and I don't mean hard, I mean, really complicated for lots of reasons, including our transportation department, which is thriving and growing and, and sort of building its capacity. But I don't know that we have capacity for that kind of cross district transfer all day long. So then there's the merger, right? And one of the things that you'll see, and, and there are a couple of things posted on Board Docs in the library section. Um, it's not on the MCCSC webpage, it's on the Board Docs in the section called libraries. The O'Neill Capstone report is in there because it's a great deal of research and information there. Um, there is also the, um, state of diversity from the U.S. Department of Education, which was published last year, that's in there. And one of the things that it talks about is the way in which school districts, or sorry, school catchment zones, which are very close together, have been sort of intentionally gerrymandered to create high poverty and low poverty schools. And that is what we have in the catchment zones of Templeton and Childs. Those schools, while yes, almost two miles apart, are very close. Their contiguous catchment zones are, if you walk that district, some sides of the streets are districted for Templeton and some sides of the street are districted for Childs, based on what, what kind of housing those things are. That is a problem because that is actually your neighborhood, right? If we're talking about neighborhood schools, that's actually your neighborhood. But they're just on opposite sides of the street because one is a single family home and one is a multi-family home. So why the merger? What happens? What happens in redistricting often is that handfuls of kids get shuffled, right? So thirty kids from this neighborhood, thirty kids from this neighborhood, we swap them, we put them like here and here. But that is not actually, I think that is the kind of situation in which you get, um, poor outcomes for those students who are swapped. Because they walk into a school where there is an established culture that they may not be welcome in. When you merge two schools, you take the entire catchment zone and you give all of those students to one school for a few years and all of those students to one school for a few years. And in that model, you actually have an entirely new culture that has to be created because you now have all of these students in these schools together, not handfuls swapped between two. And so for me, the merger is compelling for that reason. Because I worry that the environment of a redistricting in this way could be potentially harmful to the students that we're most concerned about. And I think the merger can, um, mitigate some of that harm in a different way. And yes, I know that there is potential weight for some parents to carry. And I do think that our administration can find ways to mitigate some of the timing of drop offs, um, a- and, and things like that.
I just want to say that I, I agree with that assessment. One of the things when I was considering this idea of the merger over redistricting is it's not an, it's not one or the other, it's potentially both. If we just did redistricting, I look at a school where one of my kids is still at, um, depending on how those lines are drawn, it might not change very much in our school. It may still be, um, a Title I school with, uh, you know, a lot of SES in our school. Um, because of where we're at and what we're next to in terms of another school who also is in that same situation. It's not a Band-Aid issue, which I've heard repetitively. It is one of a multifaceted thing where we haven't even come up with all the ways that we're going to fix this. But there is not one thing on its own that will fix this. Brown versus Board of Education is a great example of how one thing does not fix the whole. Because after that was implemented, white families just said, well, we're gonna take our kids out of school and create our own segregated schools. Or we're going to tear down this building where African-American children were and we're gonna plop it over here on the other side of the tracks and draw new lines that's far, far away from any white neighborhoods. That's the reality, so people find ways around it consistently. So when I think of this issue and when I think of what the merger has the potential to do and help, this is the reason why. I know we've also had individuals who have said, we're not thinking about disability. I'll have you know, those questions about disability came from me because I have a kid on an IEP. I understand how impactful change can be. My kid changed schools in the middle of his K through six education. It wasn't easy, I understand that, I'm a parent who has a kid in that situation. But it is possible and we have great teachers, we have great support staff, and they help make those transitions a lot easier for our students. Will it be difficult? Absolutely. Is it going to be hard and complicated for our kids, some of our kids? It will be, absolutely. No one's saying that this is going to be perfect. But for many of the reasons that April said and from the things that I have read and I have studied throughout the years, I will be voting yes on this tonight.
Um, I, I've, we've talked about this at so many different events, it's really hard to come up with anything new to say. And, um, and I think that the problem is that when we talk about stuff, people think we're condescending or, you know, we're trying to empathize, they think it's false. M- my four children went through one of those two schools. Like, I have deep love for that environment and for what it provided for my family. And as my kids have all launched and I'm an empty nester this year, I feel gratitude in every minute of my day for everything that I was given. But part of the perspective that I've had as a parent is recognizing that I would have felt the same way about any school in MCCSC. And any of those teachers and that set of teachers would have loved on my kids. And the fact that my kids have, um, a lot, are coming at life with a lot of privilege, with educated parents and with not worrying about where they live and where their food is, means that they would have thrived in most any setting. You know, they would have had ups and downs and they did in their grow- growing up. And so I just want to say that I, um, it, it hurts me to disrupt people and to hurt people that I care about and that I love. And it's, um, but I do believe that this is the important work of creating, um, an environment that is going to benefit all children. It's not just going to be for those less advantaged or whatever to, to be helped by, um, people with privilege. It's, when we say we're building a big tent, which is the project of public education, because there are kids that are out in the cold and in the rain, it doesn't mean that when we bring them in that we're gonna shove your kid out, that they're gonna suffer as a result. Like, we're building a big tent for all kids to thrive. And, um, it's gonna, I think, I do believe that it's going to benefit all of our kids. And, um, and that's why I support it, is I think that we learn from being with people who are different than we are. And we can say we support public education, if we're supporting, um, segregated ed- public education, then we're not fulfilling this promise.
Anybody else before we vote? Okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve the Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh seven signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? That is six in favor and one abstention, the motion carries. Next, for our consideration is the personnel report. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ross, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ashley that we approve the personnel report as presented, Dr. Staubbaum.
Thank you, President Hennessy, Dr. Oswald, and members of the Board of School Trustees. There are seven certified staff retirements and two support staff retirements to announce this evening. Michelle Blackenear is retiring from Marlin Elementary School as a grades four or five teacher after engaging students since two thousand six. Dan Brown is retiring as a corporation bus driver after transporting students in MCCSC since two thousand twenty three. Donna Clemens is retiring as a senior application specialist after supporting both staff and students since nineteen ninety three. Kari Essery is retiring from Benford Elementary School as an instructional coach after empowering staff and students since nineteen eighty five. Jean Hollinger is retiring from Highland Park Elementary School as a special education inclusion teacher after educating students since nineteen ninety seven. Susan Suzie Luther is retiring from Bloomington Graduation School as a business teacher after engaging students since nineteen eighty nine. Helen Melwidd is retiring from Marlin Elementary School as a third grade teacher after empowering students since nineteen eighty eight. Kelly Maud-Glynn is retiring from Marlin Elementary School as well as a second grade teacher after educating students since nineteen eighty six. And Michelle Muzzi is retiring from Arlington Heights Elementary School as a special education inclusion teacher after engaging students since two thousand nine. Thank you retirees for your many years of service at MCCSC. At this time, I request that you please approve the personnel recommendations as presented in the board packet.
Thank you, Dr. Staubbaum, do we have any comments from the board? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the personnel report signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions, the motion carries? Next, for our consideration is an additional personnel report. I would like to make a motion for approval of the additional personnel report appointing Dr. Marke Winston as interim superintendent beginning July one, two thousand twenty four through June thirty, two thousand twenty five. Do I have a second? It has been moved by me and seconded by Erin Wyatt that we approve the additional personnel report appointing Dr. Mc- Marke Winston as interim superintendent as presented. Um, and I just want to say, Dr. Marke Winston, thank you so much for, um, accepting this position and we look forward to working with you truly. Any other comments from the board?
Same, I mean, I, uh, I've had the pleasure of watching Dr. Winston in action for the past three years and I'm, uh, I'm so thankful that you're willing to serve in this role.
And going on eight years with the corporation, right? Um, would you like to say anything? Oh, we probably need to vote, yeah, let's do that. Getting ahead, thank you so much for that reminder. Uh, okay, so, are all those in favor of the motion to approve the additional personnel report in appointing Dr. Marke Winston, Winston as interim superintendent signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions, the motion does carry?
Ooh, I'm glad it did.
Uh, thank you, President Hennessy, Dr. Oswald, Board of School Trustees, community members, family, and friends who are here to support me. I am truly honored to serve in this capacity for the upcoming school year. Thank you all for the trust and faith that you clearly have placed in me to serve our most valuable community assets, our children. I assume this role with my eyes wide open, very wide open, and with a very listening ear. As the new lead learner of our schools for the upcoming school year, I promise to keep an open mind as I strive to learn more about the needs of our teachers, our parents, our administrators, our community members, and our talented students. I am honored and humbled to lead at such a time as this, where we face several headwinds. We have plenty of work to do and I am ready to continue serving this school community that I so deeply love. Thank you again for your support, um, for me moving into this, this role.
Thank you so much. Okay, um, we will now move on to the contracts. Do I have a motion to approve the contracts as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Been moved by Ross and seconded by Ashley that we approve the contracts as presented, Mr. Kenny?
Good evening, President Hennessy, Dr. Oswald, members of the board. There are fourteen contracts to be awarded before you tonight. I recommend approval of the contracts as presented, thank you.
Um, do we have any comments from the board on the contracts?
Um, are you? No, I was just gonna say I'm very glad that we're joining that, um, that lawsuit.
It's next.
Oh, it's next, alright, it's, okay, well, I was trying to push it. Can I preemptively comment?
Yeah, remember that time I did this about the butter chicken?
Yes.
Yeah, it was a while ago. Um, okay, any?
Then I don't.
Okay, no comments. Okay. Uh, all those in favor, um, of the motion to approve the contracts signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions, that carries, and now?
No?
Yeah. Can we just take a second, we'll just take a breathing second? We're just gonna take a break. Just two minutes. And for those watching at home, we're just pausing momentarily for some people to move out of their room. We'll resume in just one minute. But Kathy, don't you remember that time when I jumped the agenda? I did it. Now you're hungry. I feel like we should like spontaneously break into song or something like high school music.
We need the Jeopardy music.
Okay. Next up on the agenda, Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh eight, multi-district litigation against social media companies. At the February twenty seventh meeting of the board, Attorney Scott Yanover and Austin Brain presented information regarding a multi-district lawsuit against social media companies. They stated our next step, if we would like to join the multi-district litigation against social media companies, is for the board to adopt a resolution. Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh eight, multi-district litigation against social media companies is now up for consideration. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh eight as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Kathy and seconded by Ross that we adopt Resolution twenty- I'm so sorry, oh my lord, tonight I'm failing on the job. It's been moved by Kathy and seconded by Brandon that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh eight as presented, any comments from the board?
Yes.
Well, yeah, there is. No, I'm, I'm really glad to be, that we can be joining this without risk and be a part of, um, a lawsuit that is trying to hold the companies accountable for a lot of damage that's done for our kids.
Any other comments? Yeah. Okay. All those in favor of the motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh eight, multi-district litigation against social media companies as presented signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? All right, the motion carries. Next up, we have resolution twenty twenty four dash oh nine, early childhood initiatives and accompanying MOUs. Next for, uh, do I have a motion to adopt this, twenty twenty four dash oh nine as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Ross and seconded by Kathy that we adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash oh nine as presented, Dr. Haswald.
Yes, board, uh, this, uh, resolution is a, um, a culmination of, of really a significant amount of legal review related to our early childhood referendum. You may recall questions as the, who we could partner with and who we would partner with and what those would look like. Um, and it took some significant, uh, legal review, including working through the Indiana Department of Education. Uh, this early childhood initiative was written by our administrative, uh, attorneys, uh, and this resolution does allow us, and this is just the, um, blanket resolution, um, in order to, uh, actually begin to partner next year, uh, for early childhood education with identified, um, community, uh, providers. And I'll just skip to the part where it basically, um, under Indiana code authorizes, um, the Monroe County, uh, School Corporation uh, to institute an early childhood learning program that identifies eligible early childhood, uh, learning partners. Um, and just for, uh, community awareness, uh, those will be identified as qualified, uh, community partners that are not only accredited, but are nonreligious and not-for-profit. Um, it also allows us to enter into, uh, early childhood learning partner agreements with them and then to provide early, uh, childhood learning payments. And those amounts are the same budgeted for the ones that we will, uh, for the, the students that we'll be serving, uh, internally. Uh, you may recall that, uh, actually currently I believe we have three hundred, um, four-year-olds enrolled in the early childhood program at our sites. I see, uh, Dr. Dowling, uh, in the audience, he's our director of early learning. And specifically, uh, this allows us to provide a, a eight thousand dollar, um, um, payment, um, to an eligible, uh, partner for those who are, uh, have income, um, less than two hundred and twenty-five percent of federal poverty guidelines. Uh, six thousand for those who are between two hundred and twenty-five and three hundred and twenty-five, and four thousand dollars for those who are three hundred and twenty-five or greater than three hundred and twenty-five percent. So, uh, I would ask tonight that you approve, uh, resolution two thousand twenty four dash zero nine, early childhood initiatives, uh, as well as the first early childhood education provider agreement, um, that we have provided is with the Bloomington Developmental Learning Center. And we're well aware that we'll be bringing back additional agreements at later times.
Thank you, Dr. Haswald. Comments?
Yeah, I, um, I find this so moving and exciting that we are doing this early childhood as a district. And again, this is something that, if we sat here and waited for the state to fund early childhood for these kids, it would not be happening. And so, much like our policy for our teachers, our policy for our most vulnerable kids, we are walking the walk. And I'm grateful to you, Dr. Haswald, for having the vision to be able to do this. I've seen it called visionary online by our community. And if there, there is nothing, as somebody who worked in early childhood, there is nothing we can do, um, to bring that bar up for equity more than providing this for our kids. So this is, I, I just, we can't pat ourselves on the back enough and pat the administration and Dr. Haswald's leadership and our community for voting for it because the majority of our community did. And I'm grateful to them that our kids won the day because this is another example of where we are walking the walk.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other comments from the board?
I'm just excited that we're helping to mitigate costs for a great number of families. Like Kathy, I, I've also worked in early childhood education and it's extremely expensive. I have kids, so I've paid for it as well, um, and sometimes that's difficult. So us being able to gain greater access is, is wonderful.
All those in favor of the motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash oh nine, early childhood initiatives and accompanying MOUs as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions, the motion carries? Dr. Haswald, will you introduce tonight's presentation on diversity goal number one, which is staff diversity?
Yes, uh, board, this is the eighth and final presentation on diversity goal number one, staff diversity. As you know, uh, we, we do a deep dive on each of these presentations, um, uh, on a, on a monthly basis. And, um, I know that next year we'll continue to look at the metrics, but most importantly, I know next year will be an opportunity to revisit the entire strategic plan. It will have been, uh, four years and then it's the opportunity for the community to give additional input. And you set that visionary strategic plan for two thousand twenty-five through two thousand twenty-eight or thirty or whatever you elect to do in terms of a strategic plan, ideally about three or five years. Or you can be like IU and do one for longer. So for that, I turn it over to Dr. Staubbaum, this is superintendent for Human Resources and Professional Learning, who's going to do our presentation. Thank you, Dr. Staubbaum.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I am honored to share with you a presentation on diversity goal number one this evening. As you are aware, we have passed a strategic plan that spans from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-five. It has the pillars of equity, diversity, communications, and funding. And specifically, diversity goal number one speaks to recruiting, hiring, and retaining a diverse staff that reflects our student population with goals to actualize increasing staff diversity and retaining qualified staff. I want to set the definition of diversity. This definition is taken from our anti-racism policy, which was adopted in February, two thousand twenty-three. Of note, this same definition lives in the student policy, the professional staff policy, and the support staff policy. I also would like to note that the following data points are collected via hiring practices and analyzed in relation to this goal. We may federally collect race, language, ethnicity, and gender data, which is self-reported under, of course, federal law. A few of the strategies that we have implemented to recruit diverse staff are career fair engagements at universities across Indiana. The human resources team has been delighted to attend high school events and engage in HR tables where we have been able to engage in community, uh, input and community feedback sessions and then also represent what positions we have available as well. We do have a multilingual employment webpage and application, which provides five different languages for our employment website. A social media presence has increased throughout this year. And then we are very blessed to have many student teachers at MCCSC. And we have partnered with the Indiana University School of Education to engage those student teachers in a professional learning session or several professional learning sessions throughout this school year. In fact, we had over eighty student t- teachers in this room last week to, um, engage in some professional learning together. One of the most important recruitment strategies that a school corporation can engage in is their collective bargaining agreement and specifically their salary structure. As you will note on the screen, our salary, our beginning teacher salary from two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five has experienced a historically significant increase. And this is in large part due to the community, whom we consistently thank for passing a two thousand twenty-two salary-focused referendum. Another opportunity that we have at MCCSC to recruit staff are the career pathways. So we have career pathways for our students, career pathways for our support staff, our certified staff, and our staff who would like a graduate-level career pathway. The pathway we are going to focus on specifically this evening is the pathway for our early childhood educators. So if you are an MCCSC elementary teacher who has an elementary degree and an elementary licensure, then you can apply to engage in a early childhood cohort, which would provide you a graduate degree in early childhood and a tru- early childhood licensure to be able to teach in our pre-K classrooms. We're really excited about this cohort. We have approximately fifteen staff members currently engaged in the application process for this cohort in partnership with Indiana State University. Strategies for hiring include incentivizing teachers to teach in highly complex schools. If you are a teacher new to MCCSC next year, then your starting salary is fifty-seven, seven fifty. And if you are a teacher new to MCCSC and new to teaching and in a Title I school, you receive a two thousand dollar add-on to that salary. If you are a veteran teacher in our Title I schools, you receive a two thousand dollar add-on to your salary as well. We engage in differentiated professional learning and elementary staff schedules through our instructional coaching model that I spoke about during the professional learning presentation. And we provide additional preparatory minutes for elementary teachers in their first one to three years to focus on those MCCSC-specific curricular needs. Additionally, we have four oh one A, four oh three B match incentives for teachers on our first salary rows. I do want to highlight that we are engaging in a teacher recruitment fair this Thursday at Bloomington High School North from three thirty to seven thirty PM if you know of anyone who is interested in teaching positions at MCCSC. As we presented last year, we take the data that we can collect and we look at it in multiple ways. We look at percentages and then we also analyze ratios from those percentages. I will read one line from this table from left to right to understand how to read the table. So if you are looking at the self-reported race of Hispanic, you will note that there are one point eight percent Hispanic teachers in Indiana and thirteen point two percent Hispanic students in Indiana, which creates a ratio of one to ten. In other words, for every ten Hispanic students, there is one Hispanic teacher. Looking at MCCSC data, we have two point one percent of our staff who have self-identified as Hispanic with seven point five percent Hispanic students. That converts to a ratio of three to ten. In other words, for every ten Hispanic students, we have three Hispanic educators with three point one percent non-certified staff. Again, we look, like to look at this data in multiple ways to analyze the goals that we have in relation to our diversity goal number one. A few strategies to retain staff are exit and stay interviews with an analysis of themes. One of the largest themes that we're finding on why people stay is the sense of belonging and that culture of gratitude that we have at MCCSC. We are also engaging staff in affinity groups or employee support groups, most notably beginning with our BIPOC affinity group, LGBTQIA+ and Allies affinity group, and our young professionals for our professionals who are starting within their first one to five years. Additionally, we have anti-bias student-staff policies with aligned training, professional learning, and coaching. I'll speak more to that on the next slide. As you are also aware, we have passed the staff policies in February thirty-five eighteen and forty-five eighteen, which are parallel policies to fifty-five eighteen, which are anti-racism policies. Those are policies on paper, and so when we look to implement those into practice, the following, uh, professional learning and training opportunities are available that you'll see on the screen. Most notably, we engage in professional learning with staff, and you all have received a flyer this evening. And that flyer notes one of our professional learning opportunities on May seven, two thousand twenty-four. On May seven, we are very, uh, honored to have Dr. Ruthie Peno Simmons in our school district. So Dr. Ruthie Peno Simmons will be providing a keynote to all staff on culturally responsive, standards-based instruction. Dr. Ruthie Peno Simmons is from the Midwest and Plains Equity Center and also helped develop our anti-racism student and staff policies. So those policies will be embedded into that professional learning opportunity for staff on May seventh. And looking at our retention data, we wanted to look at what our macro level retention rates were for, for linking staff. So reading this from left to right, from twenty-one, if you're looking at linking staff from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three, we had an eighty-three percent retention rate. Then if you're looking at linking staff from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four, we have a ninety-two point six percent retention rate. This equates to an increase in nine point six percentage points of staff retention at the macro level. And looking at our retention rates for Title I schools in which that strategic differentiating funding is applicable in linking staff from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three, we have a seventy-eight point three percent retention rate. And then in linking staff from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four, we have a large increase of ninety point one percent retention rate. That equates to an eleven point eight percent percentage point increase for staff once we implemented those strategic staffing realities of the two thousand dollar add-on and the additional preparatory minutes. Additionally, in linking this to professional learning, we look at our return on investment for those larger professional developments that we engage in. We send staff members every year to a PLC Institute. And so when we sent staff members in the summer of two thousand twenty-two to a PLC Institute, we wanted to look at our retention rates there. We have an eighty-five point three percent retention rate of those attended that PLC Institute in summer of two thousand twenty-two and those who are still employed in MCCSC, and we'll continue to track those accordingly with our twenty-three and twenty-four PLC Institute attendees. When we are speaking of all of the different strategies we engage in to recruit, retain, uh, recruit, hire, and retain staff, we really look at those operational pieces and how those operational pieces lend themselves to creating a culture. And so as an example, our competitive and differentiated wage structures and our generous and differentiated investment matching, those are operational pieces which lend themselves to a culture of investing in the holistic well-being of faculty and staff. They also lend themselves to a culture of differentiation as a norm for both students and faculty. And then our policies, which we're grateful for, of inclusive and anti-bias practices, really lend themselves to this culture of professional learning and training focused on inclusivity and anti-bias. We gather staff feedback in relation to our strategic plan goals. Some themes from our staff feedback included the, uh, need and the strength of those career pathways for our support staff and our certified staff and our student pathways. Celebrated our competitive salary and benefits package and increased online presence with one of the most notable quotes being, "The goal to recruit, hire, and retain a diverse staff that reflects our student population is a whole community conversation. How do we collaborate with community agencies to align our efforts and actions around this important work?" Pieces of community feedback are on the screen. The first one, um, noting that they worry about staff hiring decisions being heavily based on population demographics and ask about our focus on diverse teachers. I would answer that in stating that we are an equal opportunity employer who views diversity as a large asset for both our students and our staff members. What professional development opportunities are available for support staff members and how is the district recognizing their contributions? We do provide professional development to our support staff as well that's very much based on department. And so our department directors come to us and ask for different types of professional learning, whether it be, um, you know, supportive practices, restorative practices, or it's something more training on the, um, logistics of how they operate their position. And so that is certainly something that's available as requested by directors of those different departments. And then how is the district recognizing their contribuc- butions? We do recognize their contributions in many different ways. Most notably, we have the Evening of Stars, which is coming up at the beginning of May, that I know many of you will, will be there to celebrate our staff. The last comment, it has been addressed throughout the presentation tonight. And I will state that every time we receive comments, we do take those into consideration as we continue to engage in a continuous improvement cycle on how we recruit, hire, and retain a diverse staff. Some of our next steps are to continue creating those inclusive communities for employees, continuing to explore apprenticeships and internships in education. Of course, continued collaborations with organizations focused on Bloomington as a whole, including exploring partnerships for innovative housing opportunities, uh, focusing on that corporation-wide culture of gratitude. And we are working through preparing and implementing a new evaluation system for alignment for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to talk about some of the, uh, available positions we have at MCCSC. Again, we do have a career fair or a teacher recruitment fair this Thursday at Bloomington High School North from three thirty to seven thirty in the evening. And if you would like to have an intermittent employment where you work at MCCSC here and there as your schedule allows, we are hiring guest teachers for the fall of two thousand twenty-four. I do want to note that we have differentiated pay rates for guest teachers, including those differentiated pay rates of early learning as we know that early learning guest teachers will need to include, uh, NACI and PAST equality requirements. With that, I want to thank you for, um, the strategic plan and then allowing the strategic plan presentations. And note that in May, we will provide a comprehensive overview of the strategic plan and looking ahead to the twenty-four, twenty-five And note that in May, we will provide a comprehensive overview of the strategic plan and looking ahead to the 24, 25 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Staubbaum. Are there any questions or comments?
Um, I just appreciate the amount of work that that just reflected. And I'm so grateful for you and for everyone who's put that together because that's really impressive.
Thank you.
I don't mean just the presentation, I mean the work of the presentation.
I was, thank you. Certainly a team effort.
Well, the presentation was great.
Thank you very much.
I, I'd like to add too that they got some nice accolades. Gave a similar presentation to the National School Boards Association.
Oh.
Um, at their conference this year and got some nice accolades from the attendees in that meeting.
Congratulations. That's great.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, thank you to Dr. Haswell and Dr. Staubbaum and the entire cabinet for actually the presentation, but the work that goes behind that, um, as well because we know it's an incredible amount of work and a, and a sort of daily lift, um, that you do for, for this district. Does the Board have any comments or reports, um, that you would like to share, committee reports or anything else?
I went to a committee.
You went to a committee?
I'm on the, um, well, like, yes, that one.
Yes.
And, um, I, I just wanted to say that they said they had an amazing open house at Fairview for prospective parents. It was, I don't, I'm bad with numbers, so probably you shouldn't quote me anywhere, but I thought that they said sixty-nine parents there, but it was a lot of people. And, oh yeah. A lot of people. And they also in the committee, I mean, they continue to look at their numbers and look at how they're doing. But it is true that we continue to have a broader spectrum of socioeconomic status represented in our alps. And I think that that, since that's been a mindful thing since before, you know, from the beginning about when I was on that committee and now much more intentional with the, with the strategic plan, I think that that's very exciting.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's super exciting to hear.
The second comment, sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Is that, um, I went to the North Equity, um, event that I know that, that April was out and, and so was Aaron. And, um, it was all run by students. Um, Dr. Hanks gave a presentation that was very interesting and, um, eye-opening. And, and so, uh, it was really neat to see the kids engaged in this. And so I, I think sometimes people think that DEI, since that's become a bad word now, we need to somehow change it and talk about it and code or something because of the state legislature. I'm just joking. But anyway, is, it's important to know that, like, this is about removing obstacles to learning and creating an environment in which all kids can learn and all teachers feel like they can give their gifts and, and feel like they belong. And I just, I'm really excited at the school district doing that.
Yeah, I thought that was actually such a cool event. Um, and I do want to say that work came out of the Equity Ambassador work. So apparently, um, the, those students were originally part of the Equity Ambassador team. And as we were sort of pausing to get further input and sort of do the policy side of that work, um, they were kind of like, well, can't we just keep doing stuff? And, um, you know, the principal at North, Matt Stark, said to them, yes, yes, you can. And so they started to, uh, run their own sort of student equity team. And they've done such great work there. I mean, some of the things that they were talking about were, you know, things like providing during pep rallies, um, a, uh, a sort of sensory room for students who were overstimulated in the gym, in the gymnasium, so people could go into this room to sort of, um, sort of remove that stimuli. And just a bunch of other things. But I think it was such a cool thing to see this entirely student-led conference. You know, they secured their own keynote, they created their own breakouts, they had, um, artwork and printed t-shirts and, you know, just were so engaged and brilliant in their presentations. Um, so yeah, I was-
I think it was mostly North kids though. I don't think that they had South there.
No, this was a specifically North group, so they, and, and they were, they have sort of extended and hope that this will become a more district-wide thing. But yes, it is a, a North group. Yeah. Any other board comments? No? I guess I'm still driving this ship. I gotta keep going. Um, Superintendent comments or Board?
Yes, uh, thank you. Summer learning programs registration for many of our summer learning opportunities is ongoing. We have opportunities for elementary to high school students, uh, including new this year as a science of food for rising seventh and eighth graders. And there's lots of information under the services tab on the MCCSC website. Health of Palooza, special thanks. I know, uh, um, these hacks on Dr. Finley, you guys work really hard on, on organizing that. Um, it's at Bloomington South this year on Thursday, April 25th. Uh, it is from six to eight. Um, and I know there's a dinner provided from six to seven. Um, there's a family fun run. It's kind of something that the elementary, uh, schools do every year. Um, and this year it's Saturday, April 27th at Grand View Elementary. It's a one-mile event. Um, I believe there's also a 5K event, so, uh, and all the profits goes towards the mental health, uh, support endowment that is part of the Monroe County Community Schools Foundation, uh, endowment. So, uh, if you're interested in that, information is on the website, including Grand Views. And then Parent University, which has been so strongly attended this year, um, there's another session on, uh, Thursday, April 30th at the Colab. Um, MCCSC, along with experts from the community, will provide information about youth substance abuse prevention, current trends, innovation, resources. So it's all about youth substance use prevention and resources and information on that is on the website as well. Lots of good things going on as we, uh, head towards the finish line of the 2023, 24 school year. And without a closing comments.
Thank you, Dr. Haswell. The next regularly scheduled Board meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, and without, we are adjourned.